The work is seven pages, I'm turning an extra copy.
Okay.
But it doesn't look like they're supposed to be.
Yeah.
Um, that's fine, I just.
I wanna say the last time that I used this maybe exhibit two as a map. If necessary. And so.
Now that's me though. That's my computer.
So. Oh, yeah, no, I didn't. I can stop this in pitch.
Alright, looks like we're good. Thank you for sticking around. Alright, good afternoon, everybody, it is. Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty four at one oh four P M, County Court Special Session. Is now on session and if you will stand, then please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you know that Craig is gonna be able to join us? I never did make contact with him. I haven't made any. Okay. Yeah, just not. Right, so I imagine this is about overflowing.
Sir, I would ask, sir, I would ask if you bring your hat, please, thank you. Um, alright, agenda, we just have one item for this special session, and that is, um, well. Yeah, County Court, me, members attending. Commissioner Schellman, Commissioner Doro, myself. And, um. We have, I guess, we don't have like related items or anything on there, but is that all we're just gonna discuss today? Is this this one topic? Um, so then, as normal, then. I would open it up for any public comment. And not hearing any, then, um. Michelle. Review contracts as presented to us and.
My general comment. Is that since I did, uh, was able to make some time to look it over. Um, is this pretty good? There's a couple places where there's some stuff needs to be added that are highlighted in yellow from, um. From the county council's office, and I wondered if. By any chance, uh, you're aware. Um, Fair Manager Robertson, if any of that information has come in?
I don't think it has. I know, um, Audrey said that she had made contact with Mike Slu, the project team gentleman of Five Star, and he was. Giving it a brief over, he had given a brief overview, uh. The layout, the format, all of those things are acceptable, and things will look a little worse in it, so. I don't think that there was any. Red lights, but I think he was going to be profiling his portion of the villains. Today, right today, and then I can get both, you know, what we need to get on the right end of day today, hopefully.
Great, thank you.
I'll give her a quick update in my communication with Audrey over the weekend. Um, and she was, um, making contact with Five Star. We had actually provided. Uh, as a project team, um, through Mr. Domon's assistance, an A I A contract to Audrey to provide. Uh, for this process and fill it out. She.
What is A I A? I should know that.
Architectural Institute of America.
Oh. No, I didn't know that. I was thinking of.
It's been in existence for a hundred years.
Yeah, so very, there was two that she recommended that we try to use for this process. A I A was one of them, and. Uh, due to Tom's experience, he felt most comfortable using it, uh, for this type of contracting process. Um, so what she was kind of discussing with me is the purpose, because I, I asked her, I said, okay, we've set this meeting up. And so the purpose of this meeting needs to be what? And so she kind of explained that. A lot of what we've done in, uh, previous county court meetings as the process has been going along with the project team, uh, last time, uh. Manager Robertson was on the agenda, she gave a thorough update of what we were with the. R F Q to R F P process, and that we were also doing the intent to award posting, which closed last Wednesday. And so she didn't, Audrey didn't realize that in previous court meetings that we had been, um, addressing those. In open public meetings, so that the court had been being made aware as the process was. Moving, um, and so that part has been done in previous meetings, um, and documented. But the contract was the thing that she did not have, um. In hand to work through until just recently. And so one of the things she needs us to address during this meeting as a county court body. Is that we need to formally either have authorization given to the Fair Board to sign the contract. Or to give it to the county administrator to sign the contract, or give it to the fair manager as our staff has signed the contract. So she needed that. Uh, done in a public meeting so that the authorization was clear and documented of, of who would be the party signing said contract. And so that's something we can, um. Discuss. Obviously, we'll have to give, um, permission that as these things are filled in, that it's then. A final draft provided back to everyone for a final review, but that we wouldn't need to necessarily hold an extra special session, because nothing significant will change. Um, you know, mostly it's just going to be filling in. Any of the highlighted portions. And so she needs us to make sure that we, you know, give that authority, that once the document's completed and all parties have reviewed it, that. That part can proceed with signing. And she said we could either do it as a collective thing, or there'd be multiple signatures on the contract from Lindsay and the county court and the fair board. Or we can just designate one party. And I don't know if there's really been any thought around.
Hmm.
That's part of it.
I didn't know that was the exact reason for meeting today. I thought it was a little different. Go ahead.
Uh, um, our current, current procurement policy, um. This is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, I think was the dollar amount I saw in here.
Correct.
Um. Which is. Which is outside of an intermediate. Procurement. And dollar amount, and I believe our current county procurement policy. Um. Specifies that it'll be. Done by the governing body.
Sure.
Um. I, I just, because that's where our current policy, not to say we couldn't as a vote, make a motion and as a vote to, to designate somebody.
Make it complicated. If our policy states that, I wanna have to go do a policy.
And, and sure, and for instance, when we have a session or agenda item where we just kind of. On the record, say, this has happened, we're good with it, that's great, and if there's something to be added, such as a couple of the minor things, this. In this one. I'm okay with email. You know. Send it, highlight the ones that were to be filled in. Most of us are not gonna know in depth anyway, but at least we, we feel like we looked at it.
Yeah.
And I'm finding that as well. To a final document, yes, the process.
Um, I just got this this morning, and I've been in a. Another meeting all morning until about quarter till one, um, I don't see any. Other than the highlighted stuff, the only thing I, we don't currently have a system. A numbering system.
Um.
Tracking system or whatever for contracts and.
Within like the, um, laser fish system. I guess I don't. Participate in inserting that information, so when, when we give an ordinance or resolution on that. There's nothing created that has like a contract category at this point. How have they been documented with other types of contracts within the county? I have no idea.
We have it.
Okay, cause like even like, um, you know, when the roadmaster comes in and we do the, the bid process, and he does a recommendation, then we do a formal adoption of that. How is that then documented currently?
Well, as far as the tracking number goes.
There's no tracking numbers.
Yeah, there's not like a resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero one through however many that goes. We don't have a tracking system for that, but I just. Thought while we were here, and it's highlighted on these documents. Do we want to? I mean, it might.
I just don't know how that looks like, like in the laser fish system. It's something you can just. Add as a searchable.
Well, it helps, it would help to be a searchable. Item, so that if you're putting, if you're, um, you have a naming system for your documents. Whereas like resolution, if you wanted to search resolution twenty twenty dash ten. You can just search resolution twenty twenty dash ten, and it makes it a lot easier for, for searching a document.
Right.
Um, so if we.
Created.
If we just created a tracking spreadsheet, just like what you do for. For, um. The resolutions.
I'm gonna show Commissioner Sean, this is the interface for Laserfish, and so depending on how Tammy puts them in, she generally puts them in with their title on that. So you could just go into the contracts folder, but again, you'd be looking for that. We do have a commissioner's journal number that you can go and search directly.
But that's what it looks like. Can they be listed in both places? And they'll have like the same, you know, not, not to make it confusing.
Yes.
Can it be documented in both places?
Yeah, you can put this right here.
Cause if we do put it in the commissioner's journal, and then, then. The other.
And then under contracts.
Contract is part of the commission's journal.
Oh, it is, yeah, oh, so then we. I don't know if you want to.
I didn't know it was insufficient. It's fine with me. So, so the, I guess the question would be. All these, this whole document has contract number twenty twenty-four dash. We wanna get rid of, say, it's contracted contract numbering system.
That's not very.
What do you think in your position as administrator? What do you think?
I. Myself would mind a numbering system. It's simple and easy to track from year to year.
Start it, you know, with this calendar year, and then proceed with other contracts as well, so you get it in.
Yeah.
I think it, on our end, if we ever had a question about a contract in the future, it might make it much easier to.
Yeah, to search and locate.
Information that was retained.
And it would be just a matter of, of a. Of a search and replace on this document with zero zero one. And it's done.
Start it with the.
Yeah. Um. I mean, it's just kind of an administrative type of thing, but I would, I would just assume start numbering system. Just like we do for resolutions. A lot of the orders, when we've done orders in the past, don't have a numbering system on those either, but I'd like to start those as well.
I thought that that was.
Well, I would have loved to have, uh, been at this place a few years ago, for instance, when we did the, um. What is this called out here, the?
Oh.
The receiving area for the jail.
Oh, the Sally Court.
Yeah, the Sally Board. Even though it was a little, much simpler project, I would have liked to have had something like this at that point before it was just kinda.
Yeah, we never saw that side of it.
Okay, so we'll just start a numbering system. This one will be zero zero one. Um. So, and then other than that, it's just a couple of other little informational. Additions, and I'm, like you mentioned, I'm fine with, as they come in, we just do a page change.
But then, under our current policy. Uh, we will have you as the county administrator be the signator on the contractor's. Contract. Well, I mentioned to him that we were having this meeting this morning. Or this afternoon.
No, I think it's a, we kept, we shutting off. Um, so I'm sorry, what was that again?
That we'll just have you be the signator once we get it to a final documents page. As the project team. Does that sound good to everybody?
And, you know, you can just fade us at times as a county court. Um. Very brief agenda item, or in general deliberations, or whatever's appropriate, you know, verbally, so. I'll feel like I'm not.
Well, that'd be subsequent, you're referring to subsequent contracts that'll, that'll come in.
You know, the information that. That is still gonna be filled in on a few places in here.
Well, and this should be done very soon, um.
Maybe.
Yeah, she just didn't have.
It was just not the time.
Ten forty this morning to go over the highlights. And, um. Just deal with those.
Um, well. Manager Robertson's here in the scope of work that's page twelve and twenty-three, um. This agreement contemplates a limited initial scope of work by the contractor for pre-construction design. Is that what we're talking, is that what we're handling now? And then intent for a design builder to later submit a proposal for the completion. So this is kind of the.
Yeah, so as Audrey explained.
Clarify that.
As Audrey explained it to me. That's in exhibit one, Tom.
Yeah, exhibit one, twelve, page twelve to twenty-three on the.
Because Tom actually had a, a question for Audrey regarding that, uh, that he and I discussed on Saturday. That we just wanted to make sure that we're both clear on with, with Audrey, because I didn't know that it was gonna come out, I mean. Stated like that, because with the design build, and I'll let you kind of. Speak to that, Tom, but we did have a question on item. B. The first line. Versus just the design.
First sentences, yeah.
My question is. We keep talking about. She mentions several times in here a guaranteed maximum price.
Yes.
Um, which is extremely confusing. Um.
I'm not familiar with.
Now, so I, right now, just. To let you know who I am and what I am doing. I did this for twenty-five years. Um, and have been involved in a lot of big projects. Um, and I am helping. Represent you guys with the Fair Board. Now, one of the questions is that I would have is what her. What is the intent of the guaranteed maximum price, right? The whole point of a designing build. The whole point is, um. To have a budget. Um, and to, and to have them design a building to meet your budget. Not a guaranteed maximum price. A guaranteed maximum price. From my understanding, takes you out of a design bill into a bid process. That there's a guaranteed maximum price, so we're, we're, we're giving a bid, but they aren't bidding the project. We're designing the project together. To meet our needs with what we have as budget. As a county.
Which theoretically could be less than.
It may be less, and it may be more, right? There's not, so whatever our budget is, it does, there's no guarantee. There isn't any guarantee either in.
I appreciate you bringing this up.
Because it might be less, and then we have to work together to reach that, right? So it's confusing both ways, like we are, are we guaranteed, we're guaranteeing a number? We're not. We're not guaranteeing a number, and they're not guaranteeing a number.
And, um. In just a one-sentence conversation, either with Commissioner Schellman or Lindsay or somebody, I remember saying, well, it's always the change orders that'll get you, right? If you, if your design later. Wasn't able to take into consideration many things, or, or something changed in the intent of the, the, uh, customer. To where now there's all these change orders that add up to a whole lot of extra. Costs that some, I was told, well, the design build prevents that from happening. Is that correct?
So, the, so the design build? So here, so here's the cool thing about a design build. The design build is tailored around you. As the county, you and what you, what you can afford. That, that, it isn't what you need or want, it's what you can afford.
Okay.
And so. The cool part about it is you can put in there what, as many things as you want until you can't afford it. Right? And that, and that is the line. Right? So there isn't any guaranteed maximum, because it's what you, it might be way lower than what you think, and it might be more than what you think. But that, but you don't wanna pin that number down. I, that's my feeling. Um, you don't want to have, because your budget is your budget, and that's what it is. There were, you know, it's not a guarantee. That number is a number, and, and you shoot for that number, but it might change. And so. It better than saying that would be. Would be maybe, uh. Uh, an agreed upon. Uh, budgetary amount of grant funds. That it might be a moving target. It's not a guaranteed maximum or guaranteed.
Yeah, we don't, we don't feel guaranteed maximum is the correct language to be used with the design build process due to, you know, what you pointed out, that that is typical of a bid process, but not of a design build.
So I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not quite sure without her being or having a conversation with her, what her intention. Is by saying that guaranteed maximum.
Cause this one sentence says, if the parties reach an agreement as to the terms of the design builder's proposal. The parties will enter into a guaranteed maximum. Price amendment. And we're saying, I mean, I don't, just saying, if we may, or just take it all out? I mean, I don't understand.
You're, you're gonna, so that's the whole point. You're coming to an agreement, right? We're coming to an agreement of, of compensation. So I don't know that we need to say guaranteed maximum, because I'm hoping that maybe you guys come up with some more money. And if you do, then we can put some cool other things in there, is maybe, who knows, right? But I don't know.
In the design build, that's where it doesn't just become a typical change order, or then it's a, another whack to the project budget. If additional funds are achieved, especially those emergency grant funds that will know in June whether they're come to fruition or not, and then in the legislature.
And you change, and, and maybe the whole building, and during the design process, it becomes a need for building. Would. And you, and maybe as a county court, you say, well, we got some more funds, let's add some more things to it.
Um, would you like me to give, uh, Mr. Corl's. Burma call, see if.
I can have Audrey's number direct if we wanna.
Well, I was gonna see if she, just see if she's available, and we could, she, I'll send her the Zoom link.
That's just the question, what her intention is with those, with those word. I have one other, I have another question. On page three. On page three, the compensation. Um. She's gone through and listed out the compensations and. Um, generally. And is very accepted in the industry, um, the method of invoices. Is not called billings. Um. And I'm okay. I'm okay if we, if, if they, if it stays in here, uh. But the, but, but the compensation method and the method used is called schedule of values.
Who is it?
And a schedule of values would be required. Prior to any compensation. And a schedule of values is what you bait is, that becomes the basis of your. Uh, of how you, of your payments, and then. As they.
Hi, Audrey.
Invoice monthly, it's based on the schedule of values.
Special tenant court session.
And that schedule about that, that way it protects you, and, and as a county, and as a county fair board. We do not over.
I can, I get it sent to you if that works.
Uh, so that way they cannot bill for things that are not done. Does that make sense?
Yeah, never, I'm, I'm, I'm not familiar with this stuff, so it makes sense as you explain it, yes.
It. Yeah, and so, I mean, she's done a good job of, of lining it out here. But it, but the reality is, is that as a, as. An owner, as an owner. I would like to see that the invoices are based off of a schedule of values.
And, and this is kind of where we're trying to get, uh, you know, the county court to be aware that with Tom's experience on the project team, that if. We can kind of give the go-ahead for him to review this in depth with Audrey, as he, you know, just got it in his hands as well. Even though he provided the A I A contract, and is very familiar with those. And this is what it's based off of, that if. Those changes that are worked out as he, uh, is able to share with Audrey. Because of his experience. How the language needs adjusted to actually meet the design though, because, you know, it, it's one of those.
Right, let's make it work.
It's a big challenge, uh, even for our legal team, where they don't do these type of contracts to have. An understanding.
She's done a good job here, but, but really, uh, from an owner's standpoint, and you being the owner. And you need a way, you need a way to keep from overpaying. And that method is a scheduled values, and that's what it's called, and that's an accepted. That's accepted in the industry, and that's what is accepted, and that's what's used. That's a document that's used to protect you as an owner. Um. From. Having to worry about overpaying and how you track payments of versus wo- work that is completed, right? Because in the event that there are, there are events that. Happen that you don't want. Let's say. That half of their management team gets killed in a car wreck on the way over here. And, um. It completely throws them into a tailspin, right? That's. That's sad. And we don't want that to happen, but we need to have a way to say, okay. You can't complete it. We're gonna have to have someone else complete it, but this is where the line stopped, right? And that is never in question if we have a schedule values, never. We don't have to ask for invoicing, we don't have to ask for billing, none of that. If you have that document, there is always track, and it, it never goes outside of a thirty-day period. If you want to keep it at a thirty day, she has a thirty day billing. If it were me. I would say that that should be fifteen days. Because then you're never out of a fifteen-day period. And so the amount of money that you're talking about that could be extended, or either way, is a lot less. Than a thirty-day period, right? And you're, and your liabilities are less. Does that make sense?
Is fifteen days, um, a fairly standard thing, or?
Well, it's, it's whatever is agreed upon by both parties, right? I've seen it both ways. If I was on their team, I would argue for the fifteen days. Um, if on your team, I would say. I see benefits both ways, you know, uh, it depends on what. What is best suited for. The treasury, like, do, do they write checks every two weeks? Did they write checks every thirty days? When do they write checks?
That was gonna be my, my, uh, next question, then. We pay bills twice a month. So would we want that to coincide with those, with those, uh, bill, uh, states that check go out?
That's one thing that she does not address in here, right? She does not address that in here. And. it probably should be addressed that upon approval submission of us, so they need to create a schedule of values during our design process. At some point during our design process, they need to create a schedule of values and we need to approve it. And then the that schedule of values needs to be approved every whatever, like if it's two weeks, right? Who however you set that up, there needs to be an approval time. So let's say that they submit it, someone has to review it. And I'm gonna say that most likely it will be Lindsay and myself. And then once we review it, we're gonna give it to you and you're gonna say, okay. And then you're gonna give it to the treasurer and she's gonna pay the bill, right? The problem is that can't that whole process can't be more than thirty days. Okay, it can't be. And so it needs to be addressed in here if it is two weeks. That's fine, right? But then we need to have, if it's the fifteenth and the first, then we need to say in here that a schedule of values needs to be turned in seven days prior to the fifteenth and prior to the first to allow the county a review period. Does that make sense?
We pay, we pay invoices or pay uh on the tenth and the twenty fifth of every month right now.
Okay, so I mean, I mean, that that I mean, that's that's just the days, right? And so those days this that 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 needs to be addressed in here.
Twenty day piece, that's when the checks are cut, so okay. For us, we would want, I would want to say a schedule of values on the first and the fifteenth that would give us three days to review at least and then time for me to get that on my bill submission sheet, that's usually due seven days before.
Three days enough time for you?
It should be because the reality is if you have done that documentation, if that stuff has been done in the design process and you're working together as a team, then there there should never ever be any conflict in in that that resolves all conflict prior to, right? So once that document is agreed upon, then there should be, there should, it should be streamlined. Uh, their invoicing should match, every line item should match. And and there should be fifty or eighty line items broke down on how they're gonna bill, right? How they're gonna invoice. And so there shouldn't be one line that says four point five million dollars, right? It should be broke down into little, little, I mean, I mean, it will be a big line.
It can be audited, you know, that's.
And and so it will streamline the system. And so there shouldn't ever be a question, right? Well, yeah, that's already done, they already did that, there's no problem, right?
Right.
Or or wait a minute, they have, they're billing for the building and we haven't had a discussion on that. Is it ordered, is it here? Uh, they're billing five hundred thousand dollars and I haven't seen it. Right? So we better follow up on that. Do we have an order number? Do you see what I'm saying?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Just let that review process go along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That builds in a a progress review. Things review of it.
Built right into that process.
Those are the only two questions I have.
So Audrey, that was in reference to uh compensation on page three. Uh, wherein uh the current document uh references billings. Um, and you, um, and Tom?
Yes.
Mister Dor- Dor- Dolman, Mister Dolman, have you, have you guys met yet?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Nice to meet you, I'm Audrey.
So we actually have a project team meeting uh via Zoom that that we've been doing um prior to Tom coming on that is scheduled with Greg Smith and Audrey and all of us uh tomorrow. And so these are things that, you know, after looking at these, we could kind of um sit down with Audrey in a little more detail and make sure that we're clear on language. Cause I don't, I don't expect you Audrey to get to all of it right now and in this meeting by any means. Um, but that would give us kind of, you know, twenty four hours to look it over and have any specifics that we want to share with you uh in that project team meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so I guess then at that time you guys would discuss the the um the GMP.
Yes, and and that's where we can kind of nail down what language we're gonna propose. That for that, yeah. And I don't know if there was any other things as you went through.
No, not really, I was, I was trying to be picky, but I thought it was really good. I just don't know enough to know the things that Tom pointed out and, you know.
It's kind of.
People who know what they're doing, so yeah.
So he sat on the other side of that table, but now he's working on our side of the table, it's very intricate in those.
Very helpful, oh my gosh. Audrey, I just want to compliment you though, I mean, we just got it, we looked it over and it is, it's a good body of work here for whatever later we'll be doing, thank you.
And so was just uh to clarify, was this uh what Five Star provided back here? Was this kind of a combination of the original document and that?
No, the original version that came from Five Star was not editable. Um, it was sort of in the same format as the AIA contract template where either certain fulfillable fields are um editable or the provisions themselves are editable and everything ends up being tracked uh after talking with Mike, he provided me with a an example of a different kind of contract that they've worked with and it looks, it's comparable to what I've provided for you here. So I actually connected with him this afternoon around twelve thirty to get his initial reaction to the draft that I provided. And he said that, I mean, other than needing to go through it and and making sure that any concerns they had were addressed, the format itself was acceptable. Can I, everybody, let me go. I'll go.
Yeah, we just, I just wanted to clarify that, I was kind of wondering um how all that ended up working out.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, thank you for reaching out to them and and working through that and have that ready for today for us, I do appreciate that.
So with the with the items that have already been identified that need to be revised um in compensation and and the uh GMP verbiage. Do we need to have this stuff done before signing, before executing, I mean?
Yeah, we.
It's looking like.
Execute this, this is draft, but we do need, you know, from what I understood in your email, Audrey, though, at this meeting, we could uh officially make a motion to designate who would be the authorized signer for this contract when it is finalized.
Yeah, I think you still, you want to see a final execution version of the contract. And the point of the meeting primarily is to make sure that the county court is advised of um how this election procedure went through, that the uh procedures forced the selection committee's recommendation were understood. And um at this point, you can off, you can designate an authorized signature or a signatory um and approve the contract amount uh which I think was the one sixty six, which is just for these preconcerted services. And then um make that final approval contingent upon like one final review of the contract once the final draft is ready. If that makes sense. You need, cause the first one you obviously did not completely address all of the concerns from the county's perspective. We're also waiting for some input from our contractor, so our consultant, so um I wouldn't say you have a final agreement in front of you.
No, no, it's definitely draft, which now we can just kind of work on the highlights of smaller pieces.
When we were talking earlier, I thought we were, I thought we, I was kind of under the impression we were gonna execute this today and then page changes as they as they were.
Yeah.
Identifying.
It was so full of charts, I had a I'm glad. Didn't have time to get it to my good time, so.
Oh, sorry.
But you said that we can go ahead and authorize the amount within this contract and have signatory um designated.
Contingent upon that final contractor meetings.
One final.
And approval of the selection of the selection committees, you know, choice of contractor, I think that's important to have on the record as well.
Well, and and I maybe didn't clarify this with you, but um Fair Manager Robertson, prior to the uh intent to award, had came and we've had a thorough discussion with the court about the RFP process and the interview. And, you know, that we were grateful to have two excellent companies to interview and that, you know, the project team uh engagement on that and that the recommendation was for the Five Star contractors to be the selected party. And so that was done in a prior county court meeting uh when we had uh Lindsay on the agenda.
Yes, I didn't understand that, thank you for clarifying.
No, no, that's, it was, I'm glad that you caught all that, but we had been kind of trying to keep them updated and comprised of where we were in the process along the way.
Good.
Um, the only thing, uh, Manager Robertson, uh, you 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 briefed us on the process or whatever, but do you have the documentation, like the scoring criteria and?
In my office, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And like the criteria is outlined in our Q and RFP. So those criteria are in are in there, we have score sheet, we have all of their submissions, the email form time for the withdrawal. All of that is, yes, we have that, so I guess at what point do you want it as an entire packet for Laserfish or piece by piece?
We can ask the clerk what what he recommends, but um we don't want to wait till the end, I mean, you know.
No, but.
You know.
You know, where we were just finishing up the intent to award process, cause that's what this allows us now that that um seven day perioded um finalized on Wednesday, then that allows us to proceed to this card of the process.
My thoughts were when the contract was executed, have a whole packet of old design bill.
Yeah.
From start to finish, to be.
I'd like to myself, before executing the contract and and awarding to Five Star, I'd like to review those those um.
You like to glance at them?
Yeah, yeah, just to see, just to see what what the, you know, what the score, how the scoring came out and what were the considerations were. I think there was, I think there was uh reference checks conducted and everything.
Which, um, if you want to just to highlight of that, because Tom really led a lot of that discussion goes due to his experience, most of us kind of sat back and learned a lot. Um, to be honest, uh, he can pretty much give you a pretty good synopsis as well as we can provide the documentation, but.
Both qual- both uh companies absolutely completely qualified. Both companies are in the both companies are roughly in the gross revenues of in the thirty million a year rev uh revenues, both big companies, so uh both qualified, um, both have connections, both companies have connections to the community um in several different ways. Uh, and so it uh it was, it was really good, um, really.
Have they and have these companies, one or the other, have both used this design build process before?
Both of them are specifically design build companies. Both companies uh have in-house everything. In-house, in, yeah, except for CB contractors did not have their own in-house architect. Five Stars has their own in-house architect, in-house engineers, in-house plumbers, electricians, everything.
On concrete.
All of it's in-house. Um, CB did not have an in-house architect. That was the only difference between the two, the the rest of it, they are, they self-perform, they can self-perform everything. Um, if they need to. Um, and they intend on using local uh support where they can, but they are gonna have to need the time frame. And I would imagine they self-perform a lot of it due to that.
Cool, I understand.
So within the interview process, something that the project team in the end, you know, just as you, you know, went through that and and experienced those two companies um going through the the questions that were asked. One thing that did stand out with Five Star that the project team, you know, kind of bumped them up for was their interaction um with the project team. They they did go around and and ask us when we said, do you have any questions for us? That particular company did a very thorough job of finding out questions from us about the project, about uh expectations, about just, you know, things that they wanted to know what what keeps us up at night about this project, honestly. You know, and and what's the concern from, you know, the county? And so that that was something that we didn't experience with the other company. Um, they'd actually at the end of the the process, they don't have any questions for us. Um, and so that that extra engagement, just through that, do you have any questions for us process? In in my mind, really did kind of set them apart a little bit, uh, that that's where their minds went, goes, how can we meet your needs and what what are some of your concerns with the project and so?
The other, the other.
It's a unique thing, like to have experience from my seat, I, we don't know.
The other, the other thing that really set them apart is is that they are a metal building dealer.
Yeah, they do have a.
Uh, CB was not a dealer, they they have relationships with multiple suppliers, multiple, and so.
And they actually been the other, the CB actually been using this particular supply that they sell. It is.
So that's a big deal, they they are already a dealer of a building that we want. So um whether that is an advantage, I feel, I felt like as an owner, from an owner's standpoint, that's a huge advantage. That you're part, yeah, that you're partnering with a dealer. Um, not someone that's just trying to find one.
Yeah, it doesn't become a third party situation where they're still working with a dealer to secure your building, they're working directly with the dealer.
So those are some of the things that uh led to us choosing Five Star to be the contractor.
Do you have any questions, Audrey?
Not this time.
Um, okay, so then are we going to make the changes, review, make changes? And then um bring this back before our next county court session on the twentieth?
Or is that too late?
Well, that's where we're trying to keep. There's some vacation coming up.
That's way too late.
That do not coincide. Um, so that's why we're trying to um maybe get the edits done by tomorrow and then have it ready for review, hopefully if uh Mike's able to get back to you, Audrey, after he sees it.
So just just the, just the one, that just a word, uh, we want, we want to be a good partner, we want to be a good partner and we've uh and we have really laid out uh an intense timeframe, uh a a schedule of of events to try to meet for the community that we don't um end up having a fair event with no structure, right?
Right.
And both companies were extremely aware of that and and were willing to participate in that. Now, we gotta participate too, right? If they're willing to participate, we gotta participate, meaning we can't, we're already into a design phase and if we're gonna have building permits by September tenth or September fifteenth, we gotta design, we gotta partner, design and get everything all done before September fifteenth, right? So every week that goes by now is we're just, we're just wasting it.
So day after tomorrow? So.
And look, and we can, you know, we'll do what we can do.
With, uh, when I had a conversation with Mike last week, he said ideally we need to be able to sit down um with them face to face and discuss design budget, et cetera, within two weeks. So my thoughts, looking at all of our schedules, I'm leaving the nineteenth and I'll be going to the twenty fifth. You're leaving.
We should have a meeting on the eighteenth.
I think that would be, the seventeenth, the eleventh, twelfth and the seventeenth and the eighteenth were our best chunk of dates. So.
To meet with, meet with the team on the eighteenth.
Uh, with Five Star networks for them, cause they had to do some dig into the like the geotechnical stuff and all that stuff that happened already. Um, so they they have all of that information, they need to go through it and then they'll. Um, so they they have all of that information. They need to go through it and then they'll be more prepared to sit with budget. So they know what they do and don't have to do on the.
So with that in mind, so with that in mind then, as mentioned, we can approve the the amount on this contract, one hundred and sixty-six thousand and appoint a signee.
Yes.
Um.
And we'll do the final contract review as soon as you send it to Audrey or whoever sends it to us. We already know we can zone in on the areas that we need to really look at.
And then whatever, uh, you know, the company, yeah, what their inputs.
So, but but as far as today, then we approved the dollar amount and the signee. And I would presume that since all three of us aren't gonna be around to do this unless we do another special session, that's gonna be myself or.
I I would just say, let's simplify it.
I move to make it official for Judge Hart to be the signee on contract.
For this set amount, for the set amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. I second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to appoint myself as the signee for the contract, for the county's representative, at the rate of a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars as identified in this contract. Is that sufficient, Audrey, or do?
Uh, did you? No, I think we're good. Sorry.
Um, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? And the motion carries. So when I'm presented with
The final.
The final contract. Uh, does it need to go?
Well, if you shoot, whoever's got it and shoots it out, even though you were authorized, if you want your set sent advised and shoots it back, it's an annoying strike they have.
So final needs to come back to myself then um uh for execution after everybody's reviewed it. And um.
So Audrey, once, once we kind of all agreed on final language and that, we'll have you be the point of contact that sends it back to the court, if that's okay. Wow, okay.
And Audrey, would it be out of question? I'm just thinking of if we're gonna maybe meet on the eighteenth with Five Star, would it be out of question to have a final draft to them by Friday to review before they come see us on the eighteenth?
I would think not, as long as they can get me their comments and I can incorporate it with whatever changes the county has to present. So that everybody has a chance to look at the final, final version.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, just because I don't wanna be the, that was told to me by somebody that was told to me by somebody. Did you um kind of catch that, uh, what you, what was it called, the schedule?
Schedule values.
Schedule of values. Did you catch that part of the conversation?
I mean, kind of in the middle of that. Um, and I think I I understand generally, I would, to the extent that uh your project team has specific language or recommendations. That, I mean, that's all going to be specific. This is very sort of up to your project team and and I can incorporate that for like purposes into the contract. As long as I, that's exactly what wants to.
And you guys are gonna have a project team meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, it's our scheduled meeting is tomorrow.
And would you be able to attend that so that you can get that information then?
On my calendar.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Kind of a set meeting that we.
All right, I'm just, I'm just making sure, because I don't wanna, I don't want anything missed here. We'll try and get everything covered in one swoop here and and then.
That's where we'll, we'll work with Tom and try to have that ready for our one o'clock meeting.
Okay. Um, I'm good. The only thing, the only other thing I was gonna ask about in the uh scope of work that was part of this document, there's a Kerry W. Van der Zandden Architects. K W V. K W V is highlighted throughout this, this scope of work. Is that?
Is, so Kerry W. Van der Zandden is the architecture partner that um Five Star has partnered with them on this project. That is the exact true relationship. I think Tom had some insight on that, but um as far as making sure that that designation is appropriate for the tasks and subtasks that are in the scope of work, that is one of the items that I have specifically requested that Five Star confirm, um just so that this is as accurate as possible.
Okay. Is there anything else? I mean, outside of, outside of uh meeting with the project team tomorrow, is there anything else that the county, the county court, myself, um, needs to do or get information to you on? I know there was a couple of other small little housekeeping things on on there as far as.
Okay, you were gonna contract into that? Talk to her just briefly about our, your idea around.
Um, but basically, other than just the the contractor information, address and whatnot, and then uh to the county confer, it says to confirm is my name, the point of contact to the county and um same information above that. So outside of a little bit of housekeeping and then um we don't use a um a contract number numbering system, but we did just briefly talk about that before you came on. And we decided that we were gonna go ahead and and implement one and we'd start off with this one being twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one. Um, just for, just for, I guess, for searching and being able to, uh, we call a document in our archives a little bit easier.
There are amendments that it makes it easier for referencing within legal documents. Um, the the one area I do wanna make sure that the county court looks at, because I'm not sure who the county has this responsibility would be exhibit three, which is the insurance requirements. The limits um that are going to be required have sort of been indicated based on what I've seen in the past, but that's a, that's a coverage question for the county that the county needs to confirm that those are appropriate.
Well, and Lindsay did speak to our insurance agent regarding that. I remember during the RFQ process. Is there any further?
No, but what he gave me was, is what they require. I can't, I don't have to get on and look.
Okay, um, she can review what they they did provide us initially with that, because I remember you bringing that up during one of our team meetings and then Lindsay made contact with them after that prior to.
All right. Signature line for that, so that you can just indicate who the county is like, you know, cover that and just make sure that everything's accurate. I just wanted to highlight that specific portion. It's the one area where the county is required to um, you know, verify the information that's on the exhibit.
Um, did you, did you, was it Jeremy that you talked to? And you have email or some traffic from him on that? All right. All right, I'm, I got my questions answered, I think, so. Anything else? Anybody?
I think it, yeah, I need to just spend some time uh looking at it and then we'll review those questions more early.
All right, anything further?
No.
Not hearing any, anything further, then we shall stand adjourned.
Thank you, Audrey. Thank you.
Thank you for logging in. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are you related to Dando then at all?
How are you doing? You did, what's your name?